Today for the Board of Trustees, March 27th, 2023 meeting, if we could start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in all forms, just as for our own.
We'll start with public comment, if you'd like to step on up.
My public comment is related to item number three, or I mean, I'm sorry, item number four and the water and sewer rates study items. I hope you're going to list all of the answers to the questions raised. I think one of the most important things is you guys never identified how the expenses would reduce water and sewer rates. So we can only assume water and sewer rates are going to increase with the new meters being added, especially with the reduction in assets, namely the general fund reserve. Because how are you going to pay for the projects that were delayed? The second item is related to the electromagnetic fields of the new items being installed. The electromagnetic fields impact pollinators because of the higher frequencies currently being used. They also impact pacemakers and other medical devices. And where's the information on these items? And I'd like to know whether or not it will impact our gardens and the pollination of tulips, irises, or vegetable gardens in the backyard. Lastly, regarding opportunities for litigation against water and sewer, the narrative I would approach would to go sue the township directly because it's central services fees. You guys collect a central service fee and you perform services for the township. One of those services includes putting together budget items and includes OPEB and the negotiated settlement on OPEB. Now, it's clear that additional payments were garnered from water and sewer to drop down to increase the amount of assets in the OPEB that allowed general fund to save $500,000 a year in payments. I would ask for that money to be returned. It's all in the Meriman reports. Anyone can submit a FOIA request and get it. The payment would happen over a multi-year period. I think it's a reasonable lawsuit to bring, and it's one that's very difficult to win, especially since the general fund has control of the OPEB board. One trustee is not enough to overturn any decision made by the person presenting most of the township budgets. You also put in the budget the amount that should be paid out above the benefits. And it's clear that the Water and Sewer Fund is paying more than the Building Inspection Fund, all of which, or the Cable Studio Fund, all of which are enterprise funds. Why should they pay more than the other funds? They also pay less than general fund and public safety. They both pay less than water and sewer. That would be a legitimate case to bring against the township, and you would sue the township directly. Thank you.
If there's no one else for public comment, I will close public comment. And as we always mention, suing the township, just as a reminder, is suing ourselves, and anyone can see the number of employees and cable as a whole, that less than some of the other departments, which of course determines how much is from each department. So please rethink suing again on the township. Okay, so next we have approving board minutes of March 13th. We've all had a chance to look them over. Unless there's any changes, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That passes. Next, we have the closed session board minutes for March 13th. Unless there's any changes, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Shostak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That passes. Next, we have the Water and Sewer Rates Board Study Session Minutes for March 16th. Again, we have a chance to look those over. Unless there's any changes, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That does pass. So tonight, we have Patty Volker and Andrea Bibby with us, and we'll be doing the introduction of the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance for pergolas and fountains under the general exceptions, and ground and mechanical, well, mechanical and electrical equipment.
Good evening. So we're here to recommend a consideration of two ordinance amendments relating to the zoning ordinance for those items just identified regarding patio elements, mechanical and electrical equipment. We were asked to look at those provisions, those actions by the ZBA that seem to be more of a routine, more of a consistent approval with conditions. And we found through our analysis that there's some areas that really fell in that group. And so with work with the planning commission and township staff and the ZBA, we're forwarding on a recommendation to you this evening. First of all, the first ordinance relates to patio pergolas and fountains. So thinking back, back in 2019, we did amend the ordinance to allow such items like barbecue grills, kitchenettes, gas fire pits, seat walls, et cetera, in a patio that's immediately adjacent to the rear of a home, and/or in the front of a home, depending on the location. And at that time, we did the same analysis. What were some of the more common criteria that these elements were approved? And is there a way that we could approach an ordinance that would be capturing the consistency from the ZBA, but also meeting the spirit and the intent of the ordinance? So we found that patio pergolas was one of those elements. And if located immediately adjacent, or on a terrace that's immediately adjacent to a home, and if that pergola is adjacent to the home, and it's able to be screened from public view, and it doesn't exceed 14 feet in height, looking back at the zoning ordinance, or excuse me, the ZBA over several years, we find that those are consistently approved. We did add a definition of pergolas, so that it was clear, specific to the type of structure, which is important to note. And so the definition of a pergola means an open-sided trellis-style structure that includes columns and open horizontal roof beams, and not a solid roof structure like a canopy or a gazebo. So we want to make sure everyone was clear of what we refer to as a pergola. And then we found fountains and water features. You know, if they too are on the patio that's immediately adjacent to the home, then as long as it doesn't exceed 14 feet in height, and it's screened by evergreen plantings, then those have been routinely approved and have very little impact to adjoining neighbors. So here's an example of a patio pergola. It's adjacent to the home. It's on a patio immediately adjacent to the structure, the primary structure, which is the residence. And here's just an example of what we might find the use of a pergola for. And then here's a patio fountain, another example. We said fountains and water features, because sometimes it's not, it might not be a fountain, but maybe it's a bubbler, or maybe it's a different kind of a water feature.
Which street is that?
Those are, those are the township hills back there.
I think it's down from Pickering. I really think it's. Okay, now obviously, it's springtime, and we have flowers, so we're being hopeful here. This wasn't taken last week. So our ordinance amendment included illustrations. So this is an updated illustration of what we presently have in the ordinance, and we're identifying the, let me show, and we're identifying, well, maybe I can't. But we're identifying the fountain, which is identified as 7B, and these are the section of the ordinance that this is all referring to. And then you can see a pergola that's off the rear as well. And then we also show a different perspective where it's actually showing a front view, but you're also seeing the rear patio to the rear, and then you see a portion of that roofed pergola, and then a corner lot or secondary frontage, you can see another perspective. So we're trying to be able to show through illustration what we're referring to when we're talking about these elements. And this is compounding on top of the barbecue and the kitchenette and the walls and piers that are part of that ordinance that was adopted in 2019. So here we have an example of an application where it's a pergola adjacent to the residence. It's defined in the blue highlight. It's a patio that's immediately adjacent to the residence. It doesn't exceed 16, excuse me, 16 feet from all property lines, and in this instance, you know, it would not exceed 14 feet in height. So this would be an application that would come before the building division. We would confirm that it complied with the zoning ordinance criteria, and then a building permit would be issued. This would not require going before the zoning board of appeals if it met all the criteria. The patio fountain, here's another example, where it's located on a patio that's immediately adjacent to the home. It's complying with the setback from all property lines, and there'd be ever screening, evergreen screening as part of their submission. Again, if this was part of a proposal, with maybe multiple items or maybe a single item, and then with our plan review process, we would identify its location, its screening, its setbacks, and relationship to the rear of, or in this instance, the rear of the home, and then on a patio, and this would just be a permit. The other ordinance amendment that we are introducing this evening has to do with ground-mounted mechanical, electrical equipment. Currently, these elements are considered as accessory structures, and they're permitted in the side or rear yard when placed immediately adjacent to a residence, and they're compliant with all setbacks. Should they not meet that criteria, they have to go with the zoning board of appeals. So we did the same analysis. We looked at what were the most recent approvals by the ZBA when it relates to these ground-mounted mechanical units? Is there a consistent pattern? And then we took a step farther. We actually looked at adjacent surrounding communities, and where are they placing those ground-mounted mechanicals? The generators, the ACs, the transformers, pool equipment, so forth. And we found that there's a little relaxation of those placements from other communities. And so we took a look at, more specifically, what were those variances that were granted? And when they were sought in this, specifically the side yard, that there was an allowance to allow them to be a little bit closer to the side lot line. But the criteria always was that it'd be screened, either by vegetative screening, or there'd be a screening that would be similar to the building itself, and that there was still some sort of a green belt between the unit, the screening, and that property line. So we are presenting to you a proposal where we would allow that equipment to project up to six feet into that 16-foot side yard setback, as long as it was screened with evergreen plantings, and then it would then result in a 10-foot green belt in that side yard example. In a secondary frontage, it could be a corner lot, or maybe double frontage from the rear. It would allow equipment to project up to 10 feet into that required 40-foot setback, still needing to be screened with evergreen plantings, but that would result in a 30-foot green belt. So we're still providing that visual buffer, that evergreen planting, that screening from the roadway or an adjacent property owner, but allowing some flexibility, if you will, for placement, because there's sometimes conditions for which people want to ask for that location to be something other than immediately adjacent to a home. And taking a step back, one thing that we did to address the necessity of having to go to the ZBA is that we removed these provisions from the accessory structure section of our zoning ordinance, and created a brand-new section and put it in to the site standards. That affords us the ability to, if you meet that criteria, you're allowed to then proceed with just a building permit. With the accessory structure provision, it requires approval by the zoning board of appeals under, you know, most instances. So that's the reasoning behind why we moved those provisions from the accessory structure section to the site standards. And going a little bit farther now with what we do with non-residential, we were consistent with the approaching non-residential, which I'll say "commercial," with having the preference of having the equipment to be in the rear yard, immediately a place to, immediately adjacent to the building facade, and not necessarily placed within a parking lot, which we've had some issues and challenges in the past. In some instances, it's allowed on a side yard, but depends on the size of the commercial property, and that is not changing. We're not suggesting any modifications to that. That works well, because in essence, you have ample room to be able to screen again. The intent is to always screen those ground-mounted mechanicals from public view. The reference, the ordinance also does reference, although this is still a provision of your ordinance, it's not a reference point, but we added just that reference of compliance with the minimum decibel requirements and not exceeding 70 dBA. And then lastly, placement is subject to compliance with the building code requirements, and that's for all of these units. You know, every case is looked upon uniquely when it comes to permitting. Our plan reviewer, our inspectors are looking at that placement. It has to meet the appropriate building code. It also has to meet the manufacturer's recommended specifications, too. So you have those two things driving placement, and then on top of that is the zoning ordinance requirement. So that scrutiny, if you will, is still going to be consistent as we're looking at these applications as they come in. And so we upgraded our illustration. It was a little bit more elementary of the one that we're working on presently. So this is our new ordinance amendment illustration. Similarly, it's depicting two examples. So the top large plan review illustration is showing on the right-hand side, you see the evergreen screening along a secondary side road. It's being able to extend with it in 10 feet. Maybe in that instance, there's some sort of a masonry wall or fence, you know, incorporated in some sort of a landscape proposal. And then you see the unit is adjacent to the building. And then the other example on the opposite side is a side yard application where it's showing that that unit is falling within six feet of that required side setback, which is 16, and that there's a 10-foot resulting area, which is generally going to be a green belt, or the landscaping that's immediately adjacent to the unit itself. And then the bottom two illustrations are a little bit more of a perspective view, so it kind of hones in on if it's going to be, if it's going to be a masonry or a fence, what does that entail as far as measurement? Simply, we're allowing evergreens that are going to be screening those units to encroach in that 10 feet, because that's kind of the purpose of having a green belt. But if it's going to be something other than green, then you would have to make sure that that wall or fence would be honoring that 10-foot setback in a side yard application, or a 30-foot setback in a front yard application. And so here's an example. If we had a generator that came into the township, so it's showing you a corner lot, and the blue box is depicting a generator. In this example, it's in a secondary front yard. They're maintaining 30 feet, which is our new ordinance, draft ordinance, and it is going to be screened with evergreen screening. So the plan reviewer would see this, make sure that all that criteria is met, make sure it met with the building code, make sure it met with any manufacturer specifications, and then that permit could be issued. What we're also introducing is something that's, we've had several come through the township, and we don't have any current requirements for, and that's wall-mounted mechanical units or equipment. They call them mini-splits, where they're actual units themselves that are attached to the wall, and they're serving heating and cooling for, sometimes it's a separate room, or maybe it's a part of a home. But we've seen quite a few applications, and we don't have really anything to apply as far as provisions. So we're suggesting that, you know, if it's in a side yard, or rear yard, or secondary frontage, that they can be placed on those particular elevations, but as long as they're screened with evergreen plantings at the point of placement. That really will probably drive some of those units to be a little bit lower, so they're not going to be, you know, really high units, but a little bit lower, and make sure that they're screened at time of placement. And then in non-residential districts, should that be the case, it'd be no different than what we try to achieve with much of that ancillary equipment being in the rear yard or rear elevation, that there be some screening and trying to soften some of that extraneous equipment that we see on exterior of commercial buildings or non-residential buildings. Again, we added that reference again about compliance with decibel requirements. It's still a requirement. It's not, we're not changing anything. We're just adding a reference point, so they're referencing back to, I think it's chapter 14. And then lastly, placement is subject to compliance with the building code and requirements. And again, that's the same thing as we related to the ground-mounted, is that manufacturer specs and building code requirements are going to, you know, be required in addition to even placement, as we see there. And here's, yeah, we do like our plans that come on sometimes on napkins, but here's an example where, you know, it's a quick sketch, but the person was showing to us where they wanted to put the wall unit, that they had ample setback from the adjacent property, and the evergreen screening was proposed around the unit. And here's an example of a unit that we're referring to. So these provisions were discussed at the planning commission. They held a public hearing on February 20th, at which time they recommended unanimously to approve, for the township board to consider final approval of the ordinance language that you've been presented to this evening. And we also had an opportunity to review this draft ordinance to the zoning board of appeals. And they too were strongly supporting the provisions that we were, that we presented, and actually, the PowerPoint was also part of their presentation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Andrea's here as well to answer, help assist with any questions that you may have. And we're looking for setting a public meeting, public hearing, excuse me, at a future date at the pleasure of the clerk and supervisor.
Anybody have any questions? Michael?
I'm a little confused about the minimum decibel requirements. Isn't it really maximum decibel requirements? Because it's not more than, we're not setting, unless I'm just misreading it, we don't want it to be higher than 70, so. Does anybody else?
Not exceed, well, it says minimum. Compliance with the minimum decibel requirements, not exceeding, I guess it's.
Kind of double negatives there.
It's a double negative. That's what's leading.
Maybe take the word minimum out? The decibel requirements not exceeding.
That would work.
Let's see what the. Let me get to that section. Here we go. The provision within the draft ordinance amendment reads, "Wall-mounted mechanical equipment shall comply with the minimum decibel requirements of not exceeding 70 dBA in compliance with chapter 14, sections 1422 to 1423." And let's see, what does it reference?
Just the same language for the ground-based ones, too.
Noise shall be limited to 70 dBA.
Okay.
So I think it's more of the style.
That's what chapter 14 says?
Yes, in one section. Let's try another section here. Noise shall be limited in the following manner, long-term noise, 70 dBA. So I think it's more stylistic how the chapter was read, but we can.
Mark just suggested just changing to say compliance with the decibel requirements of chapter 14.
I think the word minimum there is talking about the minimum requirements, not the minimum.
Oh, sound.
Yes, yes, yes.
And just by striking minimum, I think you achieved the same result without confusion. I understand the confusion.
Mm-hmm.
That would be my suggestion, because the requirements are the requirements, whether they're minimum or maximum.
Exactly, yes. So it's referencing the requirements, not necessarily the value of 70.
If it makes it easier, though, for the laymans, those of us that don't deal with the code.
Absolutely, that's, that's a good recommendation.
I just don't want to get into trouble later, say, 70 is a minimum. It's not, because it shall not exceed. But I think, I think Mark's right, just strike minimum and.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And all the matching sections?
Yeah, and all the matching sections.
Yes, I would absolutely do that.
And it doesn't set us back, right? We can still schedule a hearing.
I don't believe that would be such a change that would require to go back to the planning commission. I think it.
It's like a grammar change, really.
It's really a grammar change, yeah, exactly.
So I mean, I think that this is really a good thing, because given everything that's happened over the last couple of months, we're probably going to see a lot more requests for generators. And so that could, this will save people a lot of time.
Yeah, it's just a more efficient use of everybody's time, your departments, the zoning board, and make it easier to, whether it's a generator, or any of the other mechanicals, or people just adding to their outside property. So, you know, it's just like when it was presented, this planning commission certainly strong support, and thought it was very well researched by your department, and hopefully we'll have more similar type of research in the future bring others back to us.
So I see that makes a lot of sense, because the ZBA calendar gets quite full, and to have to load them up with things that are going to get approved and are within reason. The only question I had was backing up to the fountains.
Yes.
I believe you said the pergolas was not to exceed 14 feet.
Yes.
And it's, I think, the slide said the fountains couldn't exceed four feet, but I thought you verbally said 14 feet. So just, which one is it?
Four feet.
It is four feet.
Yes, the fountain cannot exceed four feet, four feet in height.
Okay, that's just all I want to know. Thank you. It'd be a heck of a fountain, 14. Like the Trevi. I don't want to say, but I know of one, so. I wanted to know what the, what it was, four feet or 14 feet.
Oh, I haven't measured it.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Quick question.
Sure.
How do you measure the 70? Is it just the manufacturer's estimate, 70 dBA?
No, it's actually measured 25 feet away from the unit.
And you accept what the manufacturer says is the sound, or do you verify that in some way?
It's verified in the field, either by the applicant or the contractor that demonstrates, and the inspector verifies, or the inspector will record what the dBA is.
Okay, great.
Oh, that is good.
And for ground-mounted mechanicals, I think of generators, but is there something else that fits in this category?
Or air conditioning, sometimes transformers, if it's applicable, pool equipment, I think, and there may be some others that I'm just not thinking of, but something similar to that.
That's just generators being on the rise with everything this summer.
Patty, is the, we have the ground or wall mechanical. What about in-wall mechanical? So if it's like a, I don't know, I'm thinking like of a apartment-type in-wall HVAC unit, not on exterior, but it's in the wall and it's flush with the exterior. So would that be included here?
If the, it depends on the installation. So I would say that if it's an exterior application, exterior, interior application, which is those the mini-splits are in some respects, it could very well apply. But if you're talking about window units, things like that.
Well, this is, I don't know if you ever, like.
Show the one that we just.
No, that's, no, that's a wall-mounted. This would be basically, the unit is inside with the panel being flushed to the exterior wall. So it's an in-wall.
So it'd be, all you'd just see was grating, grating?
Yeah, you'd see the grating with the unit on the inside.
No, we would not, that would, that would be not a physical equipment, that would be on the exterior, that would not apply to the wall unit.
Okay. I think it's great. I, you know, we're eliminating, I think, a lot of process, and the end result is, I think the residents are going to be happier, because the ZBA typically would approve those. And, you know, as Val said, comment, hopefully the ZBA calendar will get a little lighter. How many would you, how many do you think between these that do we see a year?
Oh, my gosh.
I'm averaging, in the research that we've done.
I'm averaging the research that was done, because since we've been looking at them, kind of watching the ZBA applications.
Andrea, can you come up?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry about that.
I'm going to take an educated guess and say probably about three or four an agenda.
Okay.
On average, is kind of what we've been, what I've kind of been tracking since we've been looking at this. So you take that times 12.
That's quite a few.
Those are my numbers. They're up here.
Thank you. That's great.
Any other questions?
We have a meeting date.
What date would you like to come back to?
Well, if April 24th would be ample time to be able to notice.
That's ample time for notice, yes.
Okay, great.
I like that suggestion.
That's our second April meeting. And we don't need to vote to set the meeting.
You should take a vote to accept it for introductions at the second hearing for.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept for introduction and have it on the April 24th agenda.
Trustee Berta, support by Treasurer Keeps, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That does pass. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Clerk Brooke here with his clerk report for the 2022 Facts and Figures.
All right. Well, I thought it'd be fun to talk about something that we do in my office in a spirit of openness and transparency. You know, this is, the first page here just kind of outlines my staff. There's three full-time people, including plus myself, and we have a part-time election specialist that work on the different clerk activities. I'll go to the next slide. Thank you. And, you know, this report is not something we're required to do. We take up the idea of putting together a one-page Facts and Figures report in the interest of openness and transparency to tell people about what it is we're doing in the clerk's office and report some key tracking data about the services that we provide. This is the third year that we've prepared this report. They're each fairly similar, so we can compare year over year. You know, some of our core tasks relate to elections. They relate to administering, being the secretary to this body and the various lake boards, and then providing some direct resident services. And we've got three tables, charts there showing the activities for the 2022 calendar year. Deep diving into one of these items is just looking at the services provided. It was an election year, so there's a lot of voter registration activity, both cancellations and new registrations. It's an item that people don't tend to think about when they move until the last minute, when they need it. And so these spike during election years and then go down during non-election years. In the packet, by the way, are the three different reports, you know, the 2021 and 22 reports that can show that variation. In future years, I'll probably be doing some, you know, line graphs that show this information. Passports are way up over the past couple of years. Of course, the first one we did this was for 2020, and it was, you know, COVID year. We did take some passports by appointment, and we continue to take passports by appointment. But last year, we did, you know, almost 1,300 passports for residents. We don't require the folks to be residents, but, you know, the vast majority of people who come in are residents. And that's an actual generator of some revenue for the township as well. Foyers consistently a high number, permits and licenses. The other category relates to notary services we provide and the building, the increasing number of registrations on our do not knock list. We're up now to 1,033 residences that are on the do not knock list that is distributed to solicitors, and that continues to grow over time. You know, some of these, of course, are things that are multi-departmental collaborations. You know, the foyers are not just all things we're handling here. Oftentimes, they're multi-department collaborations. Permits and licenses are the same thing. They may come in our office and go out of our office, but we're engaging other departments as well and working together to get those things done for the applicants and residents. I wanted to highlight the passports. We are a passport acceptance agency. That means we're officially recognized as an entity that can accept the passports and are trusted to seal the materials on their way to the post office that then delivers them to the State Department. The number, the amount of time, and we put them together here at the appointment that people arrive at. If they want it expedited, we do expedite it by taking it to the post office that day. And it's, the Secretary, the State Department works on them in the order received, but if you expedite them, they will work on them faster. These numbers are fairly high. Currently, the regular processing of the State Department is 10 to 13 weeks. So, you know, people, some people are listening, and they might cause them to come on in. Don't wait till you make some travel plans, because it's, you know, these numbers, it's very rare that things come in sooner than these timeframes. Just a couple of weeks ago, actually just last week, the guidance from the State Department was, regular delivery was seven to nine weeks. Now they're saying 10 to 13. And expedited was five to seven. Now they're saying seven to nine. So they do keep us up to date, and when we learn information about that, we do change it. Mailing time, of course, is on top of this as well. There are, and we're seeing this more and more because the numbers are so long, there are private parties that do courier or expedited services. They essentially take the materials that are processed often usually through us and sealed appropriately, that we verify that everything is in there. And the couriers have standing appointments at the passport agencies and can get them in front of the folks much faster. I'm not advocating it. I don't know of any particular ones that I would recommend or what their price structures are, but we're seeing more and more folks come in and using these services to get passport responses even faster than the expedited method that is available through us. The next slide shows a view of our passport tool to make appointments. Pretty easy to do. People often call. I had a call just this afternoon and did it on the phone for the person rather than send them to the website. But the website is on the clerk page to make your appointment, and it's easy enough to do right there. Once you make that appointment, by selecting your time and date, you get email confirmations, email reminders, reviews of the rules, like the materials you need to bring to your meeting, so you're prepared to actually accomplish your task at that appointment. I want to talk a little bit about elections. It's never too soon to know what's going on with regard to Proposal 222, and there were some substantial changes enshrined in the Michigan Constitution last year. We don't really know much about it. There are three key items that I want to review right now. There are others that are in there, but these three key ones. One is with regard to state-funded drop boxes. We're required, each jurisdiction's required to have one for every 15,000 registered voters and distribute them equally around their municipality. We have two, one inside here and one outside. Both are widely used. The current plan to ensure equitable distribution is to obtain a state-funded drop box from the state, and we're working collaboration with the Bloomfield Hills School District to place it at the Eastover Elementary, right next to the Bloomfield Township Fire Station over there on, is it Westview? And that should, our goal is to have that up and operational hopefully this summer. Also, we're starting to work on the nine days of early voting, which will be required for each year of there's a statewide or federal election. Those are, you know, even years, 22, 24, for instance, or 20, 22, 24. And the draft law that's being discussed right now is providing municipalities the flexibility to either host these early voting sites, to partner with another municipality locally, or to collaborate with their county. I like the idea of flexibility, because, you know, townships vary in size dramatically. I mean, some of these are, they're doing them out of their garage, literally, and some have township hall like we do that might be a place for it. My intent at this point is to host them here, do them ourselves within the township to provide that services to our residents directly, so they don't have to go to the county or somewhere halfway between us and another township. That'll start next year, and it is also our option to do nine days of early voting for every election once it starts, not just the even-year elections. I think that once we start, we should just, we should be consistent and have as little changes as possible and just start doing it every year, every election, once we actually go live with early voting. That'll be something that the Election Commission ultimately will be considering and discussing. There's also the automatic absentee ballot list. People may know that we currently have an absentee application list, so you could be on the permanent absentee list that has 18,000 people on it presently, that entitles folks to receive a application in the mail automatically, not a ballot. But the constitutional amendment has changed to allow for folks to put their name on the list to automatically receive a ballot. And one thing that would assist with the administrative problems that causes is to allow that ballot to be voted either absentee or early, during the early voting period or even in precincts. Right now, for instance, if we issue an absentee ballot, they cannot vote that in the precinct. We spend a good amount of administrative time issuing ballots, canceling ballots, over and over during the absentee process, and then they eventually show up and vote in the precinct. We have to cancel that ballot and issue a precinct ballot. It's a lot of administrative task for that. So the law seems to be going in that direction. I'm staying on top of it. You know, I was recently allowed to join and was appointed to the Secretary of State's Clerk Advisory Group to provide feedback directly to the Secretary of State with regard to their positions on these issues. You know, the state legislature will adopt some statutes, but ultimately, there's a lot of instructions that come from the Secretary of State herself and go to municipalities and townships for administration. So that's interesting. That's starting, I started last month, and mostly it's comprised of county clerks, but, you know, if you call often enough and don't stop, you know, you get what you want sometimes with these, and that's what happened there. So I'm happy to be able to express our voice here and what should be best for Bloomfield Township right at the state level as well. And then lastly, you may have noticed there are two QR codes at the bottom of our annual Facts and Figures report. We've started, you know, a feedback survey for folks that come to the clerk's office to comment on the service they received. It's a very, very, very short survey. It asks, was your experience excellent, or was it not excellent? Because nothing less than excellence is what we're expecting to provide. We haven't had a lot of online responses yet, but I hope to build that over time. You know, I welcome folks to use the QR code, provide us some feedback to the services we've offered them, and if they've got any suggestions, we're all ears. So it's good, bad, it helps us to constantly improve and be better at what we do. That's a little highlight of what's going on in the clerk's department, and thanks for listening. Anybody got any questions?
Thanks for presenting it.
Yeah, that's great. Lots of information. Thank you, Martin.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Great, thank you so much. And will those go on our website, then?
They are on the website.
There they are.
Yep. Thank you for asking.
And one is posted on my, you know, at the clerk's table as well, and so is the QR code, if people want to use that to provide feedback on the services that we provide. Again, nothing less than excellence. So we invite them, if it is less than excellence, to provide some comments as to what, you know, how we fell short of excellence.
And speaking of surveys, on a side note, Carrie is trying to do her best to get through. We had some issues where some people voted up to 40 times with one IP. So it did, unfortunately, it affects the data when, you know, somebody goes on and does 40 different votes. So we're doing our best to try and get through the ARPA information and trying to actually put it in and find out how many unique people actually did imply as opposed to the others. So we'll hopefully have that by the next one.
Great.
And next, we have approved payroll and vouchers for March 27th. Do I have a motion? By Treasurer Keeps?
Support.
Support by Trustee Shostak, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. And the last one?
I need to adjourn.
Motion by Clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by Trustee Murray, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, thanks. See you all in two weeks.